All right, we're gonna go ahead and call, let me go ahead and just move this a little bit closer. We're gonna go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for February 1st, 2022 to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 6:00 PM. I do see that everybody, we appreciate it, has their masks on. So again, we appreciate the adherence to the recommendations from the CDC as we work to keep people safe. With that being said, Clerk Boak, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Hussein.
Present.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Seven members present.
Fantastic. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Public Comment and Agenda Items. I do notice that we have some folks from the public in the gallery. What we will do is we will allow for up to three minutes in terms of public comment. We take public comment during Committee of the Whole on a first-come, first-served basis. We ask obviously that you speak to the agenda items. The only agenda item tonight being the interviews for the First Ward Appointment in terms of the vacancy. And with that being said, I would encourage folks to come down. I know we only have a few, but I would encourage folks to come down and be part of the process. When we imagined this process, and we really want to thank the iteration of council from 2015, the Charter is somewhat silent in terms of the process. But we really wanted to make this as public of a process as possible. And we wanted to ensure that we offered an opportunity to folks, particularly in the First Ward, but folks in the City of Lansing in general, because decisions made even from Ward Representatives impact everybody. But we wanted to give people the opportunity to really wade in. I will tell you that most of the correspondence we've received to date has been written communication. And I know I speak on behalf of all of council when I say that that written correspondence certainly has made a difference for us. And certainly, it's kind of an aggregate, obviously, of the interviews, of, you know, the written pieces that you all submitted, but also the commentary from the public. And so, again, if you are in the public, we certainly encourage you to come down. And you can speak to us about the process if you'd like. We have certainly tried our best, but we're open to constructive criticism. We certainly invite you to speak to any number of the candidates and the potential of them actually being appointed at this position. So with that being said, come on down.
Loretta Stanaway, and first I would like to say that in all the years I've been coming down here to council, and it's probably been at least 12, this was the best slate of candidates I can recall having before us. And I think that all of them had something they brought to the table. And we have a good choice of three finalists to pick from. They all have a good set of skills. They all have obvious interest and passion for the city. I don't think you could go wrong with any one of those three choices. However, that being said, I think that if you look at the range of relevant skills and the experiences and the connections to people in the administration and citywide management, municipal management, if you look at a Rolodex, if you will, Ben Dowd, I think, brings the most to the table and would have the best opportunity to hit the ground running. We have a lot of things coming up in the future of this city that are very vital and important and that his ward would need participation in as well as representation for the city as a whole. So I would strongly encourage you to select Ben Dowd for the position. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have others? Seeing none, that takes us to Agenda Item Four, Discussion in Action. And again, we have a First Ward Councilmember finalist, the second round. And I would concur with everything that Ms. Stanaway said during public comment. Last night, we had, and I just thought, an incredible process. Let me backtrack. Not an incredible process, but we certainly had incredible candidates. And it was, I actually spoke to a reporter earlier today, and I said it was incredibly inspiring, but gut-wrenching as well, because we knew that at some point we had to whittle that list down to three. And so, we appreciate Caitlin Kavanaugh for being here tonight. We appreciate Brian Daniels for being here tonight. And we certainly appreciate Mr. Benjamin Dowd being here. What we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna actually invite folks down, again, in alphabetical order. And we're gonna invite them down to the well, just like last night. But tonight, we're gonna delve a little bit deeper. And we want you all, again, the professionalism and poise, as somebody that still gets nervous under these lights and being on City TV, I was incredibly impressed with the poise. But we're gonna have you come down. We're gonna delve a little bit deeper. And because we want everybody to be involved in this process, we're gonna actually have respective members of the council go through the seven questions. And we want you to take your time. You guys have 30 minutes. Again, feel free to elaborate. Make sure that everything that you want to say has been said. And then what we will do at the end of the third interview is we will actually deliberate. I would certainly invite councilmembers to discuss and to lobby a little bit, if you would. And then what we'll do is we'll actually vote, as we did last night, on a paper ballot. And before you, in your binder, very quickly, on the left-hand side, in terms of your pocket, you have a resolution. And of course, the only thing that is missing in terms of this resolution of appointment is the name that will be inserted based on our vote. You have, again, a number of, let's see, you have a number of documents for each candidate, your notes from yesterday. We want to thank our office manager, Sherry Boak, for being incredibly thorough. But your notes from yesterday have actually been put back into your binders. And then what you have is you actually have the questions that you'll be asking. So there's no confusion. And then you have a section for notes, okay? So with that being said, let's go ahead and bring down our first candidate, Caitlin Kavanaugh. All right, Caitlin, you know the routine. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Good. I can't tell you how much we appreciate you being here.
I'm so glad to be here. Thank you for this opportunity.
Fantastic.
I know I messed this up yesterday. There we go.
We got it. All right, fantastic. So again, what we're gonna do is we're gonna actually just dive right into the questions, okay? And first up is Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. Good evening, Caitlin. Appreciate you being here and good luck tonight.
Thank you.
So the first question is, what is the purpose of having Ward and at-large council members?
Sure. So the at-large council members represent the interests of the entire Lansing community as a whole. And the purpose of this is to really get a bird's-eye perspective on some of the large-picture things that the City of Lansing might need without getting concerned about the individual issues of a ward. Whereas the Ward Representatives, they're there to serve the specific needs of one of the four wards to which they've been elected. And so, the benefit there is because sometimes there are challenges that face one ward that another ward might not know about. That way, they're both represented. So by having a system in which there's both an at-large member representing and also Ward members representing, then we can get the two benefits, both of that bird's-eye perspective and also of the individual needs of the four wards in Lansing.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. What have you done in the last few years to demonstrate your commitment to the City of Lansing?
I show my commitment to the City of Lansing primarily through my volunteerism, which started a month after I moved here. So I moved here in July 2016. And by August, I was already volunteering at the animal shelter. In 2019, I wanted to extend that volunteerism to the humans of Lansing, which was when I began my training as a court-appointed special advocate, advocating for the best interests of children who had been abused and neglected. Then in 2020, I learned that there was a need for poll workers because many people who typically served as poll workers were in a high-risk category and did not feel comfortable in the pandemic. So I stepped up to fill that role. In 2020, I also wanted to take on a larger role in the 501(c)(3) charity, the Steiner Corral, that I'd been a part of for a number of years. And so, this charity organizes scholarships for students in the Lansing area who are interested in continuing their education in music. So I ran for Vice President in 2020, and I've held that role and been on the board since then.
Fantastic. Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please discuss ways in which the City of Lansing and Lansing City Council can contribute to the creation of opportunities for our residents to have good education, employment, and health.
Sure. So I want to start by saying that those three are intrinsically linked. And so, anytime we're talking about policy solutions, those issues depend on each other. However, for the ease of answering the question, I am gonna break them up. So I'll go one at a time. So I'll start with education. I see three levels at which Lansing can invest in education. The first level is at the pre-K level by investing in school readiness programs, which are evidence-based and have been shown to reduce inequalities for marginalized communities. And in fact, I saw that the Need-Based Vouchers for Childcare was already part of the 2022-2023 budget priorities for the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, which I strongly support. The next level would be at the K-12 level, so for K-12 schools. Obviously, financial investment here is key. So this means providing financial support for crumbling and dated school infrastructure, investing in physical school buildings that support learning, especially as we transition or try to transition out of the ongoing pandemic, which has really revealed a lot of the shortcomings in terms of our K-12 schools. However, beyond that financial investment in K-12 schools, I think there are other opportunities for city council. For example, by establishing, bleh, establishing collaborative relationships with the Lansing School Board. For example, this could be by forming coalitions to solve a particular problem or mutually inviting participation in the strategic planning process. The last kind of level of education that I see opportunities for Lansing to invest in is from a higher education perspective. So by that, I mean LCC, Lansing Community College. Community colleges combat inequality and build a strong local workforce. And so, they really do form the cornerstone to a healthy city. And I would like to use that to transition to employment, okay? So we talked about education. Now I'll talk about employment. I have three ideas about contributing to employment opportunities. The first is by offering grants to small businesses, many of whom we know felt the worst impacts of the pandemic. Unfortunately, it was large, established national chains that really were the ones who cashed in during the pandemic, leaving small businesses behind in some respect. And I know that city council before has done different types of grant-making around small businesses, which I would support. The second is by investing in job skills training programs, specifically with an eye toward the future of work. So over the past decade or two, we've really seen a trend where the types of jobs, the sectors, the industries of jobs have really been changing as many of them have become increasingly automated. And in fact, I feel that the pandemic has kind of sped up that trend. So I think this moment in time really provides us with an opportunity to rethink what sort of jobs and skills training we can provide to Lansing residents. And I would support such programs in emerging sectors like cybersecurity and technology. And right now, I'm not sure that I see a lot of programs that are specifically designed to prepare Lansing residents for those new emerging markets. And so, I think this might be a good time to do so. And then third is supporting families who would like to get back to work but are not able to because of childcare challenges, which I touched on before a little bit. I'm sure this is maybe a familiar story to some people in this room, that many families have had to have one parent leave the workforce disproportionately. This has been women, which is a real blow to the community when a certain subsection of the population is removed from the workforce. And so, again, I would support ways to make sure that both parents or, you know, whatever guardians in the house are able to get back to work and are not stopped by doing so because of lack of childcare. Lastly, I'll talk about health. To me, as a psychologist, health is both physical and mental. So I'll start by talking about physical health. From a physical health perspective, I really feel that this is inextricably linked to challenges in the environment. And so, what I mean by that is, for example, efforts to reduce emissions, efforts to monitor and regulate PFOS, which is a huge problem in the mid-Michigan area, and to incentivize solar or electric energy instead of other types of energy. Those are all ways that we can improve the health of all Lansing residents from a physical health perspective. From a mental health perspective, I would strongly support hiring more social workers and embedding them. I know there's been a lot of discussions about embedding police officer or embedding social workers into the police force, which I strongly support, but also embedding social workers into other areas of government and making sure that any type of program that Lansing residents are encountering also provide an inroads, like an on-ramp, to some sort of mental health counseling or social work in case that that's needed.
Thank you. Councilwoman, okay, Spitzley, and she, thank you, Councilwoman Spatafor. Never mind, just a minute of time. All right, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Oh, look at that. All right. As a Lansing--
Everyone does it.
And, you know, I've only been here seven years. As a Lansing City Councilmember, how do you see your role working with the administration, neighborhoods, and businesses respectively?
Sure. So I'll start by repeating something I said last night, which is my priority is to be a consensus builder. So you'll hear me say consensus building a lot as I talk about those three areas. And I know it might sound repetitive, but truly, that's my approach. That's what I believe. So in terms of working with the administration, I think it's important to build consensus around fulfilling the primary duties of city council, things like balancing and passing the budget, drafting and enforcing legislation. However, I also feel that an important component of building consensus is also holding the administration to task to ensure that the best interests of the residents are being represented as we move toward those key duties of budgeting and legislation. In terms of working with neighborhoods, I think it's very important to build consensus with neighborhood activists who too often feel ignored by local government, which is a shame because really, those are natural partners for city council. Oftentimes, neighborhood leaders are a really good point of synergy, which means making something, you know, bigger than the sum of its parts. There's a way that we can use their expertise on the neighborhood level. So although Ward Representatives might be really familiar with the needs of the ward, the level of the neighborhood is even smaller and more granular. And so, oftentimes, those neighborhood leaders and activists have a better sense of on-the-ground of what the challenges are and sometimes can really come up with creative ways to solve problems that might not have occurred to councilmembers on their own. In terms of working with businesses, I think it's important to, again, build consensus with local business leaders and business groups to make sure that the council is truly hearing and understanding what the challenges are. And I think so many of the challenges facing our businesses have shifted over the course of the pandemic. And so, I feel it's very important now, more than ever, to communicate with local businesses and business groups to make sure that we understand what those challenges look like now in this work environment, rather than projecting kind of old ways of thinking or old ways of problem-solving onto those businesses. I think this is especially important when considering small or new or struggling businesses, and especially businesses that are owned by marginalized groups.
Thank you. Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you. Dr. Kavanaugh, what is the division of power between the city council, the city clerk, the legal department, and the administration, in your opinion?
Sure. So the city council is the legislative branch. We talked about that a bit last night. They decide which services to provide to the city and then also how to pay for them. The clerk is really tasked with making sure that democracy is carried out in a way that is transparent. They're also responsible for administering elections, business licenses, maintaining city documents and records, et cetera. The purpose of legal is to advise the city on legal matters. So from this perspective, the City of Lansing is the client. So the City of Lansing is who is being represented. And then the legal team represents the city in things like FOIA investigations or civil litigation, any employment-related matters, et cetera. And then the administration serves as the executive branch of local government. So they direct the structure of the administration. They make appointments in terms of department heads and other leaders. And although the city council is the one who makes legislation, the administration also has some vetoing power and the power of executive order.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood, Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Caitlin, our next question is, as you turn from the downtown area, many neighborhoods are faced with deplorable infrastructures and corridors, vacant homes, and inadequate rental in Ingham County land bank-owned properties. What is your idea on improving neighborhoods in the short term and in the long term?
Yeah, so in the short term, I think that it's really important for kind of immediate infrastructure improvements, which often take a financial investment. I was also really interested reading about the housing legal assistance for tenants, which I think is incredibly important and often gives a voice and a means for people who might not otherwise be able to get out of a bad situation in the short term. I'll say that overall, I feel that it's very important to listen to the specific needs of those communities rather than projecting onto them what we feel might be best for them. So I would say that listening to the communities is very important before moving on to long-term solutions. I would also say, as a researcher, I strongly believe in evidence-based solutions. And so, I think that there needs to be a balance in terms of what is evidence-based and also what is coming from the community in terms of what they feel would be a long-term solution. That being said, here are some long-term solutions of my own. I know that here I'm doing the thing I said not to do, but in the service of answering the question. I feel like this gives us some opportunities for more bang for our buck. So earlier, I was talking about LCC, Lansing Community College. And I think that that's a great partnership that the city could hold, for example, with LCC or other apprenticeship or skills training programs. So for example, if somebody is in a vocational program around contracting or electrical work or plumbing, perhaps they, for course credit or for an experiential learning credit, could help fix up buildings that are blighted. Or if there are students, trainees, apprentices in a culinary program, for example, perhaps they, for a course or experiential credit, could work in tandem with food pantries to deliver more immediate assistance to people who are food insecure. Another example of that kind of more bang for your buck is something that the University of Michigan Youth Violence Prevention Center is doing. And what they found is that by converting some of those spaces that are no longer habitable into green spaces, that both they're able to develop the neighborhood, but also they found a measurable impact on youth violence, which is one of my top priorities. So I think that in following solutions that are both evidence-based and also directly responsive to the needs of the community, I think there are some opportunities to be creative in how we partner with other groups in Lansing in order to solve multiple problems at once.
Thank you. And lastly, if appointed, what will your key priorities be? And what are your ideas for moving those priorities forward?
Yeah, so probably not a surprise that youth violence would be my key priority. And I want to talk about two categories of ways to advance this priority. So basically, two types of solutions to advance that priority. The first are proactive solutions. So we know from research that lifting communities out of poverty and improving conditions for families is the number-one way to reduce violence. And again, a lot of the things that we've talked about here today and a lot of the things that council is already doing are directed toward lifting families out of poverty. But I do want to make sure that I mention that because it's one of the most important proactive steps that a community can take. I would also support making pro-social activities for youth in their free time. As I discussed previously, part of this can be done by redesigning spaces that currently don't have a productive use, which is what they're doing at the University of Michigan. I also know both from my own research, kind of globally, in terms of what we know about juvenile justice, but from the research that I've done with Ingham County. So I know specifically in this community, one thing that's lacking and one thing that's really predictive of reducing recidivism among repeat offenders is making sure that there are strong adult bonds. So this can be done in two ways. An adult bond can be somebody who is within the home or outside the home. So to foster strong adult bonds outside the home, these could be mentorship programs, which I know city council invested in over the summer in conversation with the mayor. But inside the home, a lot of times, parents don't have the resources in order to parent appropriately. So for example, if there are other stressors on the family, such as financial concerns, health concerns, childcare concerns, et cetera, what that creates is a situation for the child that lacks consistency, lacks stability, et cetera. And we know that that's one of the strongest predictors of that youth will become engaged in crime. And so, by addressing some of those issues within the home, that's another route to kind of proactively address youth violence. I've been talking about youth violence broadly, but in Lansing specifically, there's been an issue with youth gun violence. And so, one way to address gun violence is by making sure that guns don't get into the hands of children in the first place. So this has less to do with theories on delinquency and more to do with how do we make sure that guns, particularly illegal guns, don't get into the hands of children. Finally, I'd like to say, finally, on the proactive side, I'd like to say that I received a certification in restorative justice in 2017. And I truly feel that restorative justice is one of the ways forward for Lansing in terms of reducing youth violence. If you're not familiar with what restorative justice is, it's kind of an umbrella term, actually. It can take a lot of forms. But it involves two parties who are at odds in some way coming together with a mediator who is trained in order to come to a consensus. And sometimes that involves just the two parties that are in conflict, but sometimes it involves their close friends and family as well so that they can talk about, well, here's the impact on what you did to me, but also to my friends or also to my family. And it's a way to build empathy and build consensus. Restorative justice has been used across the country in a number of juvenile justice contexts. But I really think that we can be creative here. And if city council were open to funding certification for restorative justice, we could embed trained folks in restorative justice to many different levels, whether that's in our schools to solve conflicts in schools, in the Department of Probation, in the Police Department, in social services, et cetera, to make sure that there is somebody on hand who is kind of trained in this specific type of mediation that we know is effective for kind of stopping violence before it starts and finding another resolution. Second category of ways to address youth violence is reactive. So this is after youth violence has occurred. I want to stress here two things. First of all, it's very important that any reactive solutions be evidence-based. I think that a common mistake that some city government could sometimes make is by just saying, okay, we have an emergency. We've got to figure out some program. And okay, we're gonna apply it without thinking through whether or not that program is evidence-based and really evaluating the evidence for that program. Furthermore, it's incredibly important, whenever you're doing any type of intervention, to do what's called community norming. So community norming means if a program or an intervention was developed somewhere else, that doesn't mean it's gonna work in this particular social context. So community norming means taking a program that's evidence-based, that we know is good, and then making sure that it's tailored to the needs of our specific community. This is something that I do often with the Ingham County 30th Circuit Court Family Division. We regularly engage in community norming. And so, what this means is we take an intervention. For example, we do a lot with risk assessments. We use the YLS CMI. It's a common risk assessment tool. It's used all over North America. But it wasn't developed with the City of Lansing in mind, right? And so, what might work on the YLS in one place might not be perfectly tailored to Lansing. And so, over the past several years, we've worked on tailoring this tool in order to be most effective and most responsive in the community. So from a reactive perspective, when we're talking about really complex issues like crime, it's important to take a program that's not only evidence-based but making sure that then that program is tailored to the needs of Lansing. Finally, I think that oftentimes what we've seen in Lansing is retaliatory violence. So violence that feeds upon itself. And I think that's another great place for restorative justice. So restorative justice doesn't just have a role in terms of proactively preventing violence by tamping down conflict before it starts. It can also play a role in de-escalating a situation that has already become violent. And so, I think it's especially important to make sure that restorative justice practice is employed in the juvenile justice system as a reactive measure. Okay, so that's youth violence. I know I used almost all my time on that. Other priorities. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are very important to me. I hope that it's been reflected in my responses today that I see DEI as being baked into all aspects of work on the council. So regardless of the specific subcommittee or the specific proposal, I think it's very important that we leverage that opportunity to advance DEI goals as well. However, I also know that specific attention to DEI is incredibly necessary. It's important to be thoughtful and to be intentional about the way that we address DEI. And I did notice that the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion had established a budget priority to evaluate the MRJEA. And I strongly support that. As I said, as a researcher, what I care about most of all is making sure that any intervention that we put into place is not just lip service, right? So if we're truly going to address issues of DEI, it's very important that we make sure that the measures that we're taking to address it are actually working and we don't just get to rubber-stamp it and say, okay, we put together this group, and so now we get to move on. Lastly, I think this is probably also clear from some of my other answers today. My other main priority is pandemic recovery. And by that, I mean both economic and educational. I truly feel that as a city and as a society, we are in a pivotal moment in which we-- I truly feel that as a city and as a society, we are in a pivotal moment in which we really need to evaluate how our economy works, what jobs look like, how our school system works, what are the areas of weaknesses across those two areas. And so I really feel that it's important to take a step back during this time and reevaluate, as I said, what those solutions look like and what those issues are. Because so much of what we used to know about how schools or how businesses work and what they need and solutions, so much of that has changed. And so I would also put it as a priority, I know that the pandemic is ongoing, but you know, I know we're all hopeful that soon we can at least establish more of a balance. And so I would say that my last priority is making sure that that balance that we do establish as we come out of the pandemic, establish a new normal, is responsive to this new world that we live in and these new sets of challenges and needs, and that we're not just going with the status quo of how we used to fix problems.
All right, thank you. You covered a lot of ground and you somehow left yourself six minutes.
Oh.
And so you are looking at potential future colleagues. And so if there is anything else you would like to leave us with, that maybe the questions last night, the questions tonight did not necessarily bring out, and you would like us to consider, obviously before we vote later tonight, now is your time.
I think that I've said everything I'd like to say. Maybe I didn't always say it as eloquently as I could have, but as you said, I did cover a lot of ground. So I want to thank the council for this opportunity and for hearing from me. No matter what, I think that we're in great hands with any of the candidates, and no matter what, I am here and committed to working with council in any way that I can in order to address some of the challenges that Lansing is facing.
All right. I can't tell you how much we appreciate you being here, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thanks so much and good luck. All right, that brings us to our next candidate, Mr. Brian Daniels. Come on down.
How are we doing, guys?
Fantastic. How are you doing?
I'm doing well. I cannot possibly be as articulate as she just was.
She was good.
Unbelievable.
Brian, same thing. Again, you were fantastic last night. We want you to be comfortable. We want you to have fun with this process. We are going to go through the questions, just like you saw last time. If there is time left toward the end, of course, we will let you leave us with your last thoughts, and then we will bring down the last candidate and then we will deliberate.
All right.
So with that being said, Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mr. Daniels. Thanks for being here.
Good evening.
And good luck. So first question, what is the purpose of having ward and at-large council members?
Well, as I currently understand it, we used a mixed election system in Lansing. So ward representatives, like I hope to become tonight, represent a geographical section of the city. We are more attuned to the unique problems of our constituents, like crime levels, lot development, trash, potholes, and the recreational programs within the ward. Typically, we are able to create more voting participation because we are more interactive with our citizens on a daily basis. At the at-large seats are held, you know, they represent the population as a whole. Like Kate said, they're more of a bird's-eye view. What I think is something that's happened historically with at-large seats that we don't have with the Lansing City Council is that at-large seats have been used historically to actually decrease equity and inclusion. And so that's actually why Congress barred it. Yeah, that should be my answer.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Jackson.
What have you done in the last few years to demonstrate your commitment to the city?
Well, I opened Empower Lansing on Michigan Avenue. You know, being part of the revitalization of Michigan Avenue has been important and exciting for me personally. You know, we've seen more and more places opening up, and there's excitement to increase the facade along Michigan Avenue as well. You know, I also chose to continue to live in the first ward. When my wife and I decided to move in together, I chose to stay in the first ward because eventually I wanted to run for this seat. This isn't something that I chose to do a couple of weeks ago, I've been thinking about this for a couple of years now. I also became a member of the Parks Board, you know, which has been really interesting and exciting because I've been able to be a part of the decision-making on what comes with the parks, get involved with the fit lots around the city, and hopefully we'll be able to bring more of those as well as other opportunities to, again, engage more children in parks, which I think will help decrease the violence, but we can get that later. In the summer of 2020, I marched with the Citizen to Lansing during the protests from George Floyd. You know, I truly believe in transparency and accountability, and you know, I'm going to continue to push for this and more social workers within the LPD. But I just believe, like I said yesterday, I want to create and bring back a trust of local government. I want to be able to explain to people what's going on, why it's happening, and I just think that people in the first ward have felt not only unheard, but they just at a loss because of the lack of communication, and I want to fix that. And the last thing is that in October of 2021, I was named one of the 10 over the next 10 by the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce. You know, this is awarded to people that they feel are going to contribute a lot to the city of Lansing over the next decade. And I think that that also shows, you know, my commitment to the city of Lansing. And I'm very excited to be here. As somebody who grew up here, you know, I think that, like I said yesterday, bringing my son back here to grow up, I'm so excited with where the city's headed. And I think that, you know, right now is a really important time with everything that we have going on and what's coming, to make sure that we all work together to get things done.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. Please discuss ways in which the city of Lansing and Lansing City Council can contribute to the creation and opportunities for our residents to have good education, employment, and health.
Well, honestly, there are a few different things here. So approving projects that actually benefit the city. I think one of the things that I've heard when I've reached out to places like the skilled trades unions is that the tax dollars that are created by these projects don't necessarily stay in the city. I want to make sure that projects that are brought here are worked on by people who live here, and you know, those tax dollars in turn would then add to the quality of the education that we'd be able to provide by being able to put more money into our schools and the infrastructure of the schools, hiring more teachers and taking care of those teachers. I think that in a post-COVID world, we've seen teachers at an incredibly stressful level. Many teachers come to Empower on a day-to-day basis just to hit something because of all of the stresses they face now in a post-COVID world. And I think that one of the things that we can do is take better care of them, i.e. with salary, but also making sure that they're getting any therapy services that they may need on top of what the children would need. And so I apologize to me. Next. So with employment, going back to, like I said, with those projects, making sure that people aren't being pulled in from outside areas to do projects in Lansing, and making sure that we are reaching out to young kids and young adults over the age of 18, and teaching them and recruiting them into skilled trades. You know, I appreciate what Kate was saying about teaching kids computer skills, but the reality is, we see a lot of contractors now unable to fulfill the jobs that exist because we don't have workers. Skilled trades is a lost art. And being a union town, honestly, my father was a UAW Vice President in 1753 in the early 2000s. And, you know, it's always been important to see the people of Lansing build things, and I want to make sure that we give these kids these opportunities. When you pull a kid into something like Local 333 or like carpentry, you give them a job skill they can live with, they can feed their family with, it gives them a reason to be off the streets, it gives them a reason to not get into trouble, it gives the people purpose. I think that the more purpose that we can create, the less issues we're going to have overall. And with health, there's a few things. So, you know, as somebody who's spent the last 10 years devoting my life to people's health and being out on these fit lots, you know, I want to make sure that there's equitable opportunity for people to be able to work out. That's one of the reasons that I've, you know, I've run my business the way that I have. But also going out into schools and, again, bringing back more physical education, and while I understand that test scores matter to some, making sure that kids are moving and healthy and happy is also going to improve their overall test scores. Also, something else that we can do to provide health would be to work with McLaren or Sparrow and bring healthcare free to our most-at-need people, making sure that they're taken care of, which will, down the road, lead to lower health costs for us overall. I want to make sure that people who don't have access to healthcare are getting that healthcare. Yeah, I believe that is everything. Yes, that is everything for that. Oh, I apologize. No, I lied to you, I'm so sorry. So as far as health, I want to, I actually want to touch on this and I will come back to it. One of the things that I think is really important, and like I may have touched on yesterday, is with the Board and Water and Light, they removed the pipes from the city that would poison people's water, but that has nothing to do with the homes in the first ward. When we have lead pipes and we have galvanized steel pipes in these houses, people are still drinking potentially poisonous water. And I think it's one of the things that we can do as a council with the upcoming infrastructure money, making sure that we create jobs with that money, but also making sure that we clean these houses up. That will also pull in more people to Lansing, which would increase the schools, which would increase the budget and increase taxes, and it all really does come together. I can't stress enough how much I'm going to come back to this, this will be one of my priorities, so I will answer that later. But I truly believe that if we want to improve the health, then we got to make sure people are drinking clean water. I live in the first ward, I live in a house in the first ward, I don't drink the first ward water because I don't know what the pipes in my house. So.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Spitzer.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a Lansing City Council member, how do you see your role working with the administration, neighborhoods, and businesses respectively?
Well, so with the administration, I would look at myself as a colleague, a colleague. I'd like to help council to pass ordinances and improve the city, you know, collaborate on projects that are going to not just help the first ward, but make sure that we're all, not just successful individually, but as a city. I think that we can do a lot of good if we're more focused on working together and holding each other accountable for the things that we're saying and putting out there. And I think that, you know, one of those things would be pushing for more eco-solutions, whether that be the solar lights like I talked about in the park yesterday. I think that it's 2022, and, you know, we can, we as a group could be working together to make more eco-friendly and accessible options available in Lansing. I apologize for, I have to look at this question here. So what was the next one, the neighborhood? So with the neighborhoods, identifying and addressing problems. You know, I really think that it's really important to get out and to knock on doors. I need to hear from the people. Again, I don't think people in the first ward have felt heard. So making myself available to them, whether they're coming to my business or when I have to campaign over the next couple of years, I'll be knocking on doors and walking through the neighborhoods regardless. I want to meet with people. I think that getting with those neighborhoods, the neighborhood leaders, identifying neighborhood leaders that don't, if there aren't any, and then creating neighborhood coalitions or building on the ones that currently exist, and making sure that we're coming together to address the needs and identify issues temporarily. I think that we can be also proactive individually and within these neighborhoods if we're creating associations that are helping each other out. One of the things that I love about, you know, the East Side neighborhood is people will post that they need this and then someone will bring it to them. And I think that we should be doing that over the ward. You know, with the snow tonight, I want to, you know, there are people who are preparing their snowblower and gas right now. Actually, Sam Klonz, one of those people, someone that was here yesterday, he's planning to be out there to clear driveways and sidewalks for people who can't do it themselves. These are the things that, as a neighborhood, I think, as the representative for the first ward, I want to try to help neighborhoods grow in that respect, where we're taking care of one another. I think that that's something that, when I grew up in Lansing, over in the Churchill Downs neighborhood, that's what I saw. My neighbor, Mr. Wilson, always did that. He always showed up for everybody. He was always shoveling, and I believe we should get back to that. We should do more of it. And as businesses, as a small business owner, I understand the struggles that we face in Lansing. I understand what we've seen, what we've had to react to, the lack of help that we have had. And then the help that we have had is nice. It's small and it's helpful, but what we really need is to make sure that smaller businesses are having opportunities that these larger businesses are having. I don't know what we can do as far as tax incentives, but I know that larger corporations are able to ask for an incredible amount of time without tax incentives. And I would like to see if small businesses have that opportunity. I would like to see small businesses be able to get off the ground. I would like to see minority businesses get off the ground. I would like to see women-owned businesses get off the ground. We have the space here, we have the empty buildings. Michigan Avenue has the empty buildings, Kalamazoo has the empty buildings. We should be filling those up. We should be giving people opportunities. We can create those grants to help people get off the ground, and I want to be a part of doing that. Also, you know, as a member of the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce, I want to reach out to other businesses and make sure that they're getting their needs met and just champion the idea of all working together, because I really think that that's how Lansing's going to grow.
All right, we appreciate that response, Brian. Councilmember Spatterford.
Mr. Daniels, thanks for being here.
Yes.
What is the division of power between the city council, the city clerk, the city legal department, and the administration, in your opinion?
Well, I think that, you know, there are defined roles. Everyone has their separate roles. So the council makes laws. We also provide oversight of what's going on with the administration. The legal interprets laws and gives advice to the city, the same way that you lean over to him to ask him a question. With the clerk, they keep records, they also administer the elections. And, you know, I was somebody who volunteered to guard one of the poll sites during the last election to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to vote safely. I think that obviously elections have been under attack as of late, and whatever that we can do to protect that and to support, you know, support the clerk and his endeavors, I think is really important. And then the admin is the day-to-day function of the city, Mayor Shore's administration, who is, you know, hiring city employees and running the city on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was it. And Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Brian, our next question is, as we turn from the downtown area, many neighborhoods are facing the deteriorating infrastructure in corridors, vacant homes, inadequate rentals, and Ingham County Land Bank-owned properties. What are your ideas on improving neighborhoods in the short term and in the long term?
You know, I think I already answered it, but I, you know, I think it comes down to infrastructure. We are going to have a once-in-a-generation windfall with the infrastructure money coming into the city. Making sure that each ward gets their opportunity to delegate that money to the proper places, I think is really important. I want to make sure that we're able to fix up the houses that currently exist. We are bringing houses up to code, making sure that code is actually enforced. I believe, like I said about the drinking water and pipes, I think that we have to make sure that we're using that infrastructure money to solidify these houses for a long time. We're not going to get this money again, so we have to do it right. That's one of the reasons that I reached out to the unions was to ask them if they could guarantee me that they would work with us to give a competitive rate, so make sure work is done right. It's not, this can't be bringing in a contractor that has a blank truck or, you know, trunk slammers, as I believe it's called, and show up blindly and do a job and then it has to come and get fixed. This has to get done right. So it's working with organizations in the city and the unions and skilled tradesmen, and making sure that we're using that infrastructure money to create jobs, fix these houses. You know, one thing Kate mentioned, and I also want to bring up, is that, you know, Joe Nelson told me about a program where at LCC, the students were repairing a house over on the East Side for credit, and I don't see why we couldn't be doing that again. I also, you know, think that that's another way to be able to teach these kids long-term life skills. I apologize. So the other thing that I think is really important is to create more green spaces. So as someone on the Parks Board who's actually been really vocal about having more trees in the city of Lansing, I think having more green spaces, like, you know, studies show, actually decreases crime. On top of that, I think that neighborhood beautification programs would be a really great way to create, you know, neighborhood cohesion. And again, I know that I'm not by any means ever trying to bash the Churchill Downs neighborhood, but how it looks now compared to 20 years ago is vastly different. but how it looks now compared to 20 years ago is vastly different. And, and I think that the first ward is very much the same. There are, there are people who are working very hard to bring back, uh, neighborhoods within the first ward, but overall, we've seen a decline. Everyone who grew up here, I don't think you could deny that. And so I think that it's really important to bring these neighborhoods together and work on these programs, and, and make small changes that are going to lead to overall neighborhood satisfaction. And I think that the more people that we, the, the happier people are with the neighborhoods, this is also going to draw more people to the city. Um, it's also gonna keep people here when they're graduated from LCC and MSU and Davenport. That's the end of my answer.
All right, thank you. If appointed, Mr. Daniels, what will your key priorities be? And what are your ideas for moving those priorities forward?
So, uh, honestly, the, the first one, um, is uniting the ward. And when I say unite, I mean creating a space where everybody feels they can come to be heard. Um, I don't think that you can make two ideologies agree with each other, but you can give space for everybody to be heard and for us to find common ground within that. Respectful tolerance is something that's been lost. It's been lost within the city. It's been lost in our country. And, uh, it's something that I've, I've preached for years now, that you don't have to agree with someone to coexist with them. You don't have to agree with someone to respect them. And I think that I want to work on bringing that lack of respect and that expectation of respect back to the way that we talk to each other within the ward, the way that we talk to each other on Facebook, the way that we talk about each other. I think that you can't control what someone says, but you can choose to take the higher road. You can choose to, to listen rather than just yell. And I think that that will create empathy and there's always an, an opportunity for changing or softening of views if you're actually listening as opposed to just yelling. Um, increasing safety, you know, everyone has mentioned gun violence and we have, there's, there's no doubt that it, this day, the city's never felt like this. Um, a- as, as a father of a son who lives in the first ward, uh, my, you know, my son is nine years old and he's, uh, I want him to be able to play safely outside. You know, uh, unfortunately, we've lost people in this city who were not part of the gang violence. They were innocent bystanders or they were in the car. And these are, these are situations that can't happen. Uh, I think that we have to reach out to these children. I think that there are already great organizations in place that want to help. And unfortunately, because of the division in our city, uh, we're unable to bridge these gaps and bring people together. And so I want to work on that. I, I'm saying, like, in front of you, in front of everybody, that I want to be able to bridge that gap. We may not all agree on everything, but everyone wants to help these kids. We all might have different ideas of how we do this, but it can be done. Um, I think, you know, uh, I can never, as eloquently as Kate said it, talk about, um, the, what research shows. But I know that as someone who was blown up at 19 years old and traumatized, that if you don't deal with it, it's only going to repeat. These traumas just continue to come out in other ways. There's, there's no way that you don't have this increase in violent crime and you don't see an increase in other crimes. You know, when it comes to increasing safety, I think that mentorship's a big part of it. I think showing kids that, that look like me or darker than me, um, that you don't, you have options. You know, again, I go back to skilled trades only because I think it's really important that you're giving these kids direction. I think that, uh, mentorship is great and you can tell a kid everything that they need to hear, but if you're not teaching them how to utilize tools to improve their lives, we're doing nothing. Um, we, we all had, uh, I know I only have eight minutes, I apologize, but we all had, uh, people come into our schools when we were younger and they would say these amazing things about not blowing out candles and, 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 you know, lifting each other up. But if you're not given the tools to do it, it doesn't matter. And I think, I think that I want to, like I said, I want to work with the organizations that already exist. I want to make sure that grant money can be given to organizations to, to bring people together. We might not agree on everything, but we all agree, we all want to live here safely. We all want to know that our homes are safe. We all want to know that our jobs are safe. We all want to know that our kids are going to be safe. The idea of playing out to the streetlights, "Come on," is not the same as it used to be. It's never gonna be. I'm not naive, but you don't have to have this. You can teach a kid how to talk to one another. You can teach a kid to say that they're hurting because they saw their friend killed. This isn't, this isn't something, this isn't science, honestly. It's just empathy and communication. We are, we are capable of doing this at our level. Uh, we are capable of working with organizations, even if they don't agree with us, at their level, to make sure that we are helping who actually needs it. And again, giving them the tools to do so. Now, uniting the ward and giving that space to people, being able to bring people together, uh, with respectful tolerance, giving these kids opportunities, making them safer, making our streets safer, making our businesses safer, will entice people to move back here, not out to, not out to DeWitt and, and the surrounding area. I want people to be in Lansing. People, a lot of people work here and they leave, they get on Cedar Street and they're gone. Or they get on Larch and they're gone. Or they get on Michigan Avenue and they're gone. And this can't be the case. We, we, we should be trying to uplift our community by, by enticing people to be here. And we can come up with those programs. I think that the more, the more that we're doing to, to uplift the facades of houses and to, to clean up our neighborhoods, we're gonna entice people to stay here, and when they stay here, they're gonna build their lives here the same way that we have. And that's how the city grows. That's how we move forward. I understand that a lot of damage has been done and things look a certain way, but they don't have to stay this way. Um, we, we saw with 2020 that we are capable as a city of coming together. So let's do it. Let's, let's actually show up for one another. Not just in a weekend, not just in a movement, in a moment, but continuously showing up for one another. Show me that you actually care. The people who are out there saying that they want to change things, show me that you want to change things. I'm showing you. I've, I have talked about this for two years that I want to be here. And I want to be here because I care. Clearly, I'm passionate. But more so, I know that things, in order to get them done and not get stuck in the bureaucracy of reports and research and reports and research and, and panels, we have to actually be proactive. It's the same with the projects and, and development in the city. Let's be proactive in these things. Phew, I apologize, but that's where I'm at.
This, this is your time.
Yeah, I have five minutes.
Yeah, and so, you know, maybe I should have said this earlier, uh, to Caitlin. This is not only an opportunity, uh, toward the tail end of this thing, to leave us, your potential future colleagues, uh, with some things to, to chew on before we vote tonight, uh, but also to, to, to leave the folks that are actually watching and tuning in, and the folks that, um, you are looking to represent. Um, and we understand the hierarchy around here. Um, and so, uh, really what you would be, uh, you know, if you were appointed, would be taking it to motion to the people that you will work for. Um, is there anything, uh, that you would like to leave any of us with, again, before, uh, the decision is made later on tonight?
Yeah, um, again, like I said last night, my name is Brian Daniels. Um, I am, I'm 35 years old. I have a son who's nine years old. My wife's name is Maggie. I own Empower Lansing. Uh, you may not know me. You may know somebody who does. I, I encourage you, I'm asking you, if you need something, come find me. Let me see if I can help. I will definitely find a way to help. Um, you know, I want to say, uh, honestly, with four minutes left, I want to say, uh, to my son, I want to show him, this is what you can do. You can be a part of your city. The involvement that you can be, uh, the involvement you can have in your city comes from the passion that you have and your focus. And I want, I want to show that to, to other kids who grew up with, without knowing that. I never could have imagined that I'd be sitting here, even with this opportunity tonight. Um, and, and I'm here because I worked very, very, very hard. And not only that, but I've made a point to build and foster relationships. The city of Lansing taught me that. When I moved to New York City, people thought I was weird because I was so nice. I'm so nice because I'm from Lansing, Michigan, so let's be nicer to each other. Let's figure this out. Um, and honestly, uh, like I said, I'm gonna be knocking on your door. So I, I look forward to that opportunity, and you'll see me soon.
I'm certain we will.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I am looking to, um, our city attorneys, I'm looking to our colleagues on council, the mayor's office. We are ahead of schedule. Could folks use five minutes? Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna actually stand at ease for five minutes, uh, so that we can use the restroom, things of that nature. Uh, and then Mr. Dowd, we will get started, uh, properly at 7:05, okay? Okay. All right, folks, we're gonna reconvene, uh, the meeting, and we are going to invite Mr. Dowd. Dowd, come on, Dowd. How are you, sir?
Hey, good evening. Doing well? How are you guys?
We, I, I think we're doing well.
We're winding down.
Yeah, exactly, yep, and we are so happy to see you. Um, and so you've seen the process play out, okay? We're gonna jump right into it. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna start with council member Garza.
Good evening, Mr. Dowd. Thank you, Council President.
Good evening, Mr. Dowd. So in your perspective, what is the difference between ward and at-large council members?
So, it, there's nothing new to, to kind of share of what we don't know, but I, I'll, I'll kind of tell you, uh, obviously defining the at-large as people that represent the entire city and, and the ward, the constituents that have voted you in in that particular area, right? Um, the, the ward members are a dedicated voice to that, that area and those single individual concerns that come up. And then they're, they're the direct correlation for residents in that area to get to council, right? So you've got, that is your, your dedicated person. At-large will help represent the greater good of the entire city, along with the, the ward members. While they all ultimately represent the city, I think the important thing for me to keep in mind is that, um, it's crucial that both at-large and ward reps work hand in hand together. So although there are, there are different representation or there, some is a larger, broader, um, umbrella, it's so important that there's a unified method to get the job done and that all council members are here for the greater good of Lansing.
Thank you so much. Council member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. What have you done in the last few years to demonstrate your commitment to the city of Lansing?
Thank you. So, um, as I talked about last night, I, uh, several different things, and I'll touch on those again tonight, along with some examples. Um, I mentioned that in 2019, I did attend the Lansing Citizens Academy held through the Neighborhoods Department, Neighborhood Rituit Department, um, which really gave me an opportunity to, um, bring back skill set to my community that I was able to garner through the 12-week program and, and understanding all the different departments and how they work throughout the city. Um, much of my involvement within the city has been in the Old Town capacity, and I'd like to share a few of the things that I've been able to work with and, and represent and be a leader within the city in that capacity. Um, I've been able to work with several different departments already throughout the course of my time. A couple of examples, um, a few years back, Brett Krasinski from Parks and Rec called, and he said, "Ben, I need a letter of support from Old Town and Old Town businesses. We want to get Turner Mini Park, uh, which is the park on the corner of Chavez and Turner, also Lansing's smallest city park, in case you ever needed a fun fact." Um, they wanted to get that redone and need to get in front of the mayor to get onto the budget. I said, "Not a problem." We got letters of support taken care of, and lo and behold, it was, it was adopted into the budget. Um, pandemic hit, that didn't happen right away, but we were proud to do ribbon cutting this last year, um, and dedicate the new park to the Old Town area. So that was a great, um, involvement there. Um, former parking director Chad Gamble, who was here for many, many years, and I got real tight and very close over the course of the past few years. Um, and even now, working with interim director, um, Tracy at the parking office, um, has been part of my service to the people that I've been working with already. So this included things like, um, email after email to make sure that we could get striping done in the streets, so we had not, we knew how many defined spaces there were on streets. Um, working with the new meter implementation that went out through the entire city, but being the voice for the people in Old Town when there were concerns. Um, the day that they rolled out, I actually went out and put one of the shirts on with all the, the parking folks and stood out there and by the kiosks and helped every visitor that came through, how to learn how to use that kiosk, and we rotated that out for a course of a week. Uh, but making sure that people understood our parking with, when they entered the city. And then working with the parking to really enhance Lot 56, which is the Caesar Chavez Plaza at the corner again of, of Chavez and Turner, to get that, uh, that lot resurfaced, redone. Now it's a beautiful space that, that we have, um, been able to get taken care of there. Um, just yesterday, I was in a meeting, it was our first of a kind so far, um, where we pulled the, the, uh, business organization leaders together throughout the city. So we had DLI, um, our new fellow who was working on the MLK South Lansing Corridor Improvement, myself, our new director for Old Town, and the representative from the Saginaw Oakland Commercial Association, um, to get together and start talking about what do we do across city. Uh, and, and that wasn't, that, that was spurred of a need between all of us talking and saying, what are we doing? How are we, how are we not supporting each other? How are we supporting each other? And that is now going to be a monthly meeting that happens. We hope to bring in the other corridor improvement authorities, as they have representation, to ensure that down Michigan Avenue, the, the things that are happening there get brought into that conversation. So really, building my experience out across the entire, the, the entire city, um, is, is already happening. Um, over the past, uh, two years, uh, we were here several times. We worked very closely with Downtown Lansing and Rio Town to, and, and, and city attorney and council and everybody to get the, um, the, uh, social districts passed. So that was a huge deal, right? We came out of pandemic and it took a lot of work. We had to get a lot of people involved to, uh, get businesses on board, make sure we had the licensing taken care of. And it was really a response to our people in the community that had gone through a, um, a trivial time with their business to keep the doors open, not only our restaurant business and bars, but also the, the retail stores that benefit from somebody being able to walk out of dinner with a cocktail and walk down the street and be able to still wa- entertain their business, um, in that way. So that was the way I was able to collaborate. Um, I worked with the former Department of Neighborhoods and Civil Civic Engagement Director Andy Crawford, now Delisa Fontaine, on several cleanup initiatives. Um, this last one was able to be actually cross, uh, neighborhoods. So it, for Old Town, we, we registered or we, we signed up for that, got everything set. Um, and the Walnut Neighborhood reached out and were like, "Hey, we need to do some stuff on our end." And I was like, "Well, let's share these resources. Let's make this a bigger community cleanup than we already had planned." Um, and that's not the first time. That's just an example of, of things that have happened throughout the course of time. And then working with the Neighborhoods Department, I've also been able to attend several neighborhood, um, roundtable meetings where we were able to have conversations about what's happening in our neighborhoods, um, as well as, uh, the Walking Wednesdays that have happened, that neighborhoods have the ability to do and showcase their, their individual neighborhoods, which is great, because you can take those things, learn from that neighborhood, and bring it back to your individual community. Um, I mentioned yesterday that with my involvement in Suits in the City, we are training the entire LPD right now. Actually, I just had another session this afternoon, and we'll wrap that up tomorrow. But really, I was, I was instrumental in the development and execution of that training that is happening right now with the Lansing Police Department relative to topics regarding the LGBTQ community. Um, one thing I didn't talk about, which is exciting, uh, there was a group that wanted to form a, a new nonprofit and, and they were guided to my direction. So we were excited to form Lansing Pride, which will be the local organization that will be, the intent is to partner all of the, um, siloed organizations within the LGBTQ community to bring them together and have one unified voice in Lansing. And they are the group that is going to be working on, um, what, what is going to be known now as Lansing Pride, um, that's happening right here in the capital city. So that's super exciting, um, and, and they are waiting for just their certification of the 501(c)(3) status and that will be set. Um, and then a couple of things, I've really been a strong proponent and advocated, advocating for housing resources throughout the community, um, primarily through, especially with, with COVID money that was flowing through MISTHA. We just did not see money moving quickly. We had needs on the ground and we needed to move that. And so being able to have those conversations and really be an advocate for folks that needed things to happen was, was very important, and I was there to do that. And then lastly, um, within my, the businesses that I represent, um, as it came to COVID, uh, relief, I was able to personally review and help people walk through the process of applying for grants during the times when they were the most desperate. We had so many businesses that probably would have closed their doors across the city if it was not for even in some cases, a $10,000, uh, gap coverage to get them through to, to take care of their rent and their utilities until they could open their doors again. And without people in the community helping to support that, and I was able to do that, and I feel very, very humble that I had the experience to do that and also the capability and the capacity in my, in my life to do that for folks.
Thank you. Uh, council member Brown.
Thank you, President Hussein. Please discuss ways in which the city of Lansing and Lansing City Council can contribute uh, to the creation of opportunities for our residents to have good education, employment, and health.
Absolutely. So, I really think that the, the way to- So I really think that the, the way to approach this is through our neighborhoods, right? We have, we've got to have a good connection with our neighborhoods. And I would say the first thing is, is bringing back the Neighborhood Roundtables, working with the, the Department of Neighborhoods to do that. But then also having a good representation from council there. As a Ward representative, we should be in part of those meetings every time that they happen to really be, that's, that's our chance to have a connection to all those folks that are having those conversations. It, it doesn't always go far if people get together and they have an, an opportunity to, to voice concerns or have dialogue, and they walk away and there, nothing happens out of that if, if nobody can take that and move it. I think that's a, a big part. So that's, for our residents, when it comes to education, we've got a, we have such a strong thing with our Lansing Promise. I think sometimes we, we forget about what a great tool that is. And I think making sure that our residents really are honed in on that, right? That's a, that's an opportunity to keep folks in our school system. And are we, are we focusing on that piece of it? And the group working behind that is doing a phenomenal job. It's a, in my day job, we are working, we, on forming CSAs across the state, and Lansing is the, the place that people look to. So we are seen across the state as a leader in this, and we've got to capitalize on it. That will be our driver and, and getting that education right into the community college level. We, we already have infrastructure set for, for a good educational system. Now it's building the trust in our school system, right? So we've got to ensure that we don't have people that, that pull their kids out of our schools. We, we've got to work to make sure that our schools are safe, that they're staffed, that we've got the right resources within our schools to, to effectively execute on the things that we're promising our children. For businesses, a, a business leader roundtable is, is kind of what I would, would introduce. That meets monthly to have deep conversations. Now, this does exist in some capacity in Lansing, but what I will tell you is it's not necessarily accessible to everybody. Right now, there is a roundtable that happens, and it brings city leaders in, it brings people from the administration, it brings people in from the state, brings people from the colleges. But in most cases, you have to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce to attend that. So if you're, if you're a small business and you're not a member, where is your representation? And where are those conversations happening? They're not. Like you, you either are in that group and you're part of that conversation, or you're just not part of that group. And I, I feel like that is a very inequitable balance of communication within our city. And I think that, that's an easy fix, right? We can have those same conversations without having to be invited through another channel. It, it just, it simply can't be the only way folks across our state or across our city get the same information. Then lastly, for employment, equitable employment is so crucial. I think it starts from the city leading as example. It is important that the city not only go through training on equitable hiring practices, understanding our own personal biases as we go through. Every person who hires an employee through the city should be trained in equitable hiring practices. Once we do that, then we can set that bar, right? We're, we're giving out large tax incentives for these companies to bring in jobs and bring in huge investment into the city, which is fantastic. But if we're not expecting them and following up with them and make sure they are hiring the people within our city and they are truly providing the, the level of, of investment in our city, and that it's equitable, like we have people that need jobs, good jobs in our community. And if, if we don't start from the top and work our way down on what that looks like, then we're missing a, a huge part of what, what our businesses should be doing. We cannot hold our business community accountable for their decision-making and job hiring if we're not doing it at, at city level. That's the answer to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitsel.
Thank you, Ms. President. How are you doing? As Lansing City Councilmember, how do you see your role working with the administration, neighborhoods, and businesses respectively?
So the administration, let's start there. I think within council, we have to remember that, and I, I think we all know, or we all feel like we know, that being a yes person is not the way to go, right? Like we've got a, we've got to set an expectation of level of challenge. We need to ask the tough questions, make sure that the administration is, is upholding their end of the bargain and, and that we are holding them accountable. It doesn't include just the mayor, includes all of the departments. When we have a citizen within our community who comes to us with a concern, it is our duty at that point to ensure that we are asking questions. And, and even some of the smallest things sometimes could lead to a bigger, a bigger picture issue. And we, if we think back and go, "Oh, shoot, should have listened to that first complaint," right? So it's, it's the, working across lines and ensuring that we hold each other accountable within that part of the administration. With the neighborhoods, I mentioned it already, but the Department of Neighborhoods and Civic Engagement, I am a strong proponent. When the mayor started that, that department, it really was a game changer for the city. I will tell you, having been involved since the inception of that department and really garnering a lot of the services that they provide, I sincerely feel for the, the areas of the city that do not have a neighborhood organization and are not able to take advantage of those resources. It's just unfortunate. So I think the first thing we do is we get with not only just in Ward 1, I, I think that, that would be obviously my concern would be the neighborhoods in Ward 1, but across the city. But my, my steps would be identify those neighborhoods in Ward 1 who are not already actively engaging in some sort of a neighborhood association and allowing them to receive the services that fall under that department. These are, they're so, to even get the funding and the resources of that is a very simple process. The city has made it wonderful, and working with that department is great. The second thing is really getting to know and identify the city leaders that are already established. So within these neighborhood, neighborhood leaders rather, within these neighborhoods, we have people who have risen and are, are shining. You know, we think of the North Town area, the Old Town area, the East Side community. All of these places have people who are doing this. Bringing those folks together with council and cross collaborating is so important, and I think we're really missing out on that. And when we talk about how our neighborhoods work together, it doesn't need to be in silos. And I think that's, that's one of the biggest things I'd love to break down is the silos. And I'll address that a little later. And then for businesses, so I would tell folks that want to bring a business to Lansing, this is the, the ideal place to do it. And, and I am a transplant to Lansing seven years, right? And here's why. And when I moved here, I worked in banking, and I took a job here in the banking industry. And I was helping customers in other parts of the state that just simply did not have the resources that Lansing has. Things like the SBDC right here. If you want to start a business, we literally have resources like blocks away. And other folks of state have to really search for those things. We just are not even, I'm not saying we're not. I feel like we could be taking more advantage of those things. So, and really fighting for folks to take advantage of resources or making resources more well-known, I think is, is probably the most important. So my goal would be to work with groups like SBDC, local banks, credit unions, the Lansing Financial Empowerment Center, again, another city resource that we have right here that can really help develop business plans and work with our small businesses to ensure that they've got the resources that they need. I'm fortunate with, with working in Old Town because I've got, we're a Main Street community. So what that means is Downtown Lansing and Old Town are both Main Street communities. So we are funded through the, through the state that we get handed to us a list of all the resources available and all those things. But there are parts of this community who just don't have that. How are they getting that information? And to me, that's the biggest concern. How are these other smaller business areas getting the information about grants available and resources available? And how do they, how do they work through the process when they have true business concerns? So I think with that, we need to, we need to really bring together, and I'll talk about that in my priority area because we're moving on time and I, I can get winded. So I'll end that question.
Okay. Councilmember Spadafor.
Mr. Dowd, thanks for being here tonight. Excuse me. What in your opinion is the division of the power between the City Council, the City Clerk, the Office of City Attorney, and the administration?
Yeah, absolutely. So as we know, council is our advising board, if you will, our, our legislative body, overseeing pretty much anything that, that needs to happen within the city. Our clerk, we know, has a defined role in his, in their responsibilities in, in election and, and collection of files. And although each, each of those four areas has a different role within the city, they are so interconnected, right? Like we alluded to, Brian said earlier, you know, you lean over and you, you ask the attorney a question. It's so interconnected. I think in order for, an example is, you know, the, the clerk is taking care of something for council, might get the attorney involved to make sure that it's happening right. That if we don't have all pieces involved in that, that's when something goes wrong. And then our attorney is obviously here to keep, keep us on track with what really, what our charter says. If, if we're doing this, does this make sense with, with what the charter says we could do? And if it doesn't, well, nope, that's, you're laughing, but... So I think it's, it's essential that all, all four of those, those roles are intertwined to work together and realistically that everybody's holding each other accountable. We're only as good as our, our weakest area. And so if we, if we can't work together effectively, then we're weaker.
Fantastic. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Ben, our next question is, as we turn from the downtown area, many neighborhoods are faced with deteriorating infrastructure and corridors, vacant houses, inadequate rentals, and Ingham County Land Bank-owned properties. What are your ideas on improving the neighborhoods in the short term and in the long term?
Thank you. So to start with, I, I think the, the short term, if a, if a specific neighborhood does not have an active group or board, then working with those areas for representation of those folks. So I mentioned earlier the business groups, right? Like that's important that businesses get that information out. But if there are not neighborhood groups, this leads back to the Neighborhoods Department and those resources. We need to, to really work with those, those areas to have a, a starting point to get that conversation going. I think that's super, super important. And then for those that do have a group already established, ensuring that there's good communication and a clear channel for issues or concerns or questions on up to the, to the council level. I would say significant strides have been made when it comes to the area of code enforcement, but I, I also think we have a ways to go. I have talked to property owners who are looking to invest dollars in their units or their, their buildings, and they run into oftentimes trivial issues when it comes to code enforcement or, or getting cleared for a project. Or at least in what their minds appear to be trivial, right? That may not be the case, I am not a code person and I will never pretend to be. But you look, the same people look around at them and they look at these houses that are falling down and they say, "I, I'm willing to put this money into this, why does this not work?" I think what we need to look at is our, what are our policies and our practices among, within the city to ensure that there's accessible opportunities for people to bring houses up to code and to rehabilitate homes? And that it's encouraging for people to do that. We know that we have so many rental properties in the city, and so many of our landlords are absent landlords. Many of them don't even live in the city, so they don't care. And if that is the case, and we have homes that are not being taken care of and, and we have renters who are living in conditions that are, let's be honest, a place we would not even want to call home, then, then using our power of code, fining them, making sure we're, we're putting it where the dollar hurts, or where the, where it hurts is the dollar, right? That's going to eventually catch up and that's going to make things happen. And I think we just need to be more aggressive in those aspects when we have a lack of regard for a property. When we have people that want to do better though, then we need to be there to work with them. And I think that's so important. So the, the, the last piece of that was, talked about Land Bank. And I really think with this, it is relationship. So I mentioned yesterday that I, I attend every month the, the area CED meeting, CED Network, Community Economic Development Network. Every month, I have the opportunity to talk to the Land Bank. We talk monthly about properties that are coming up, properties that are vacant, what happens to a, a development that wants to come in, or, or what's going on across the city. What that's led for me is as people have come and talked to me about developments that want to happen around the Old Town area, and maybe they're landlocked. One in particular, landlocked over here, there's a Land Bank property on one side, a house on this side, and a Land Bank over here, I need to get all this. Who do I talk to? Well, then you start, you have the ability to have those conversations and bring those people together because I already know what's happening with that because I had that conversation last month with the Land Bank about these properties. So although they are, there are, there are sites that are issues, it is about continued relationship and conversation with the Land Bank to ensure that we move forward with beautifying our neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. If appointed, what will your key priorities be? And what are your ideas for moving those priorities forward?
Absolutely. So my number one, and we've, we all know the state our city is in, we've got a violence problem. We've got issues with, with things happening across our city. It's, it's, it's not a secret, and we need to address it. I am a firm believer in our, our community policing program. So when the, when Lansing brought out the community policing program, we made national news. We were leading the way in how we, how we policed our residents and our communities. And that meant putting people on the ground within our communities. And when we did that, we saw a reduction in crime, we saw a reduction in violence. We saw, if you take the crime map and you zoom it in, in those times, from when there is not a CPO to when there is, it is, there's no disputing the efforts that that makes. I understand during, and I've had conversations, Chief Green and I talked a lot about this. I'm excited to talk to the new chief more about it. And I understand when pandemic happened, that was a natural area. We had to pull folks off of that assignment to put them on patrol. There were, there was things that needed to happen. But as of right now, we have six positions that are not filled. So we have six pockets of this neighborhood that have been identified that need to have police force ingrained in their community, and we're just not, we're, it's just not happening, and it's been that way. I was informed today through a conversation with an officer that we do have two more being filled in three weeks, which is great, super excited about that. But that still leaves four more open, and that's not even having conversations about other parts of the city that need to be identified. So I think if we want to talk about how we, how we police our community, how we build trust in the police department and start getting in our communities and, and ending a habit or a, a cycle of violence, we've got to have people, we've got to have our police force respected for number one. And number two, they have to be visible on the ground and a part of our community. When they drive down the street and they know who the people are when a call comes in, that is a much better reaction to that encounter than an officer who has no idea about that person and rolls up on a call and it can immediately turn violent. We have got, it worked. We, we bragged about it across the country. I just think we need to really put our, our investment back into our community police officers. The other piece of that, we, I, we know we had our, our social worker resign, and we also have the ability to bring on additional social worker, at least, one at this point. We, we move that, we progress that. Now, I'm not saying just put a body on the ground because that doesn't, doesn't do us any good. But we've got to put some pressure on, on, on the department to make sure that we are correctly policing the city. And, and that will, that will start to organically open up doors for conversations throughout to, that will address these situations. The last thing I want to talk about is, a priority would be small business support. So I am the product of a family who owned small businesses. I saw firsthand the sacrifices that go through to make sure that your business survives. I mentioned earlier that we have so many resources in our community, we, we just truly do. Many times, they're either unknown, hard to access, or perceived as not for me by many people in the business community. I'd recommend working with SBDC, MEDC, LEAP on community workshops that happen throughout and for our businesses who don't have the things handed to them. Additionally, I think we need to work on, my proposed solution to this would be a, a business development committee. And what that means is we bring in business leaders throughout our community that help us identify what the, what are the important things that businesses need? And what are they, how do we attract and make sure that any small business that wants to open up has a level playing ground to be successful in Lansing? We want people to bring business here, that's not a question. And we're helping large businesses come. How do we make the small guy fit in? Small business is the backbone of any community. And if we don't look out for our small businesses, we will not have communities that thrive.
All right, Mr. Dowd, this is your opportunity to leave us with your last thoughts.
All right.
As well as, and I think maybe even more importantly, the folks in the first ward that you hope to work with, obviously as their next council representative, but also work for.
Yeah, for sure. All right, I got a minute and a half, so. So I, I know, I, I want to make sure this is to, to you and to, to the Ward, that I, I talk a lot about my experience with Old Town because that's, that's relevant to me right now. And so that, that is what I know, and that's what I've worked very hard in. But I, I want people, folks to know that I am aware of the full Ward. I am aware of, of many things that happen within the East Side community, the North Side community. I have worked across our Ward, across other wards. I am very open to that, and I, I, I think that, that needs to be said so folks don't just assume this guy only cares about Old Town because that's not true. That's just simply where I've put my efforts at this point that happened to be within the Ward. And then lastly, what I would say is, as alluded earlier, this is a good, good pick, candidate pool. pit, candy pool right here. Like I'm up just with some good, good folks here. I think what I would, what I would say is, when it comes to talking and walking, there are two things. There's talking about what you can do or what we should do. Then there's those of us who have really been walking all along. And I have definitely walked a lot of walk in the city. And I am ready to continue, continue that walk throughout the entire ward.
Fantastic. We appreciate the time. We are, you know, it was actually Mr. Dowd that talked about the importance of legal and legal keeping us on track. And as I changed up the wording just a little bit with regard to the last question from Mr. Daniels, they did advise that I should bring Mrs. Kavanaugh back up. So if you could come back up just very quickly. And here's what we're going to do. So I, the wording became, yep, come on up. I'm sorry. Come on down to the well. I apologize. Come on down and you can take a seat. You have an added opportunity here. And so, so the added language was, is there anything that you want to leave with the people of the first ward that you're going to be not only working with, but more importantly, working for? And so this is your opportunity. We'll give you maybe three minutes to address that. So you have the floor.
Sure. Thank you so much. I think that I would really just reiterate to, actually, I'll look at the camera. I think I just reiterate what I said earlier. I'm here to help, no matter in what capacity that takes. I hope to help as your representative for the first ward. However, no matter what, please know that I am committed to, to serving the community in whatever way that I am able to. I do feel that I have good ideas, and I feel that I have a number of strengths that could improve the situation in Lansing. If I don't know you yet, I'd love to get to know you. And I look forward to working with you, whether as a neighbor, a representative, or in any other capacity.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we get to item four B, the resolution, just a couple of things. Number one, I do want to cover really quickly, and I, and I'm sure you guys have taken a look at the packet, sorry, but that we do have six letters of support for Mr. Dowd. We do have five letters of support for Mr. Daniels. We did get a letter of support as well for Mrs. Kavanaugh. I think that's incredibly important to note on the record. In addition to obviously on the public comment that we heard tonight, calls that you may have received in other forms of engagement. That being said, we are actually going to amend the process just a little bit. So at the outset of this meeting, we talked about the paper ballot. And in discussions with both our city attorney as well as Vice President Wood, what we would prefer to do tonight, and we are certainly within our legal rights to do this, is to have kind of an open conversation. As I said earlier, feel free to, you know, suggest and lobby. And then what we'll do is we'll actually entertain motions, okay? And then at that point, what we're going to do, because we want to absolutely be fully transparent as part of this process, we will actually take roll call votes, okay, tonight as part of this process. So without further ado, is there anybody that would like to address the process, the candidates, lobby, have at it? Mr. Jackson?
I'll just start with the process. So I appreciate the amendment, but it sounds like it would be a motion for a single person, and then we all vote. But if we stayed with the paper ballot, we could all do the paper ballot and then see who has the most first place votes because we're not doing a ranked choice. And then we can either agree that whoever gets the amount of first place votes would be who we vote on, and then we can make a motion, I move whoever since they got the most first place votes. Yes or no? Because I just feel like if you put somebody first, then it's like, oh, I mean, maybe that's kind of my second guy. I mean, I don't know if, if I could wait and see, because if they get, what is it, four votes right away, then, I mean, I don't know. I guess that would be enough. But then it just seems like the paper ballot, we could just ensure that, you know, we got it like that.
And, and this certainly is not a dictatorship. Are there other comments regarding that?
I just had a question.
Councilman Spatafor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice President. Thank you. Is there, in the city attorney's opinion, is there an ability to do some sort of straw polling, or are we not able to do that? It sounds like that's what Councilmember Jackson is suggesting, is straw polling versus binding voting.
Yep.
Is there an ability to do some straw polling here versus binding votes? Is that something we can do? That sounds like some, something Councilmember Jackson suggested. I'd be interested in knowing if that, if we, you view that as a path forward?
He, he's having a hard time hearing the question. So if you want to, just one more time.
Oh, yeah. Jim, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds like that Councilmember Jackson is suggesting some sort of straw poll before we end up voting. Is that something that we can do with this process? I'd be interested in that answer.
You decide the process. You just need four votes. There are seven members serving, and it's a majority of those serving. So it's four out of seven. You could do it either through debate and then motions. You could do it in writing and, you know, that whole process that you originally looked at. There's, there's no rule how that is done. You just need to get the four votes at some point.
Okay. To that, I would be supportive of a straw poll if that's something Councilmember Jackson is interested in, that would maybe not be a binding first vote, but see if there's a consensus among the council before we move forward with the resolution.
Okay. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I guess for me, I'm a little troubled by the straw polling because I, I just think it's, I don't know, we're going to vote and we're going to have a straw poll. And it, but, and if we have a majority, it's not binding. That ju, it just seems like it's kind of a redundant type of thing. Having said that, the other thing that I'd like to just express some concern with is that, you know, the, the discussion part. I mean, yesterday, we voted, and we counted the votes, and we moved on. I, I'm uncomfortable with changing that process in midstream to where now we're having this, this open discussion. You know me, I'm a, I'm a process person. And so, you know, I, I will do whatever, you know, and I will go along with whatever the council says and the majority says, but I, I am uncomfortable with changing the process. Thank you.
And that is fair. I thought I saw Councilmember Spatafor's hand up.
Yeah, I was just suggesting that if there is consensus in the first poll, then just move that resolution. If we get, if we get no consensus there, then continue debate. But Sherri went through the process of printing these papers out, so I feel terrible if we wasted.
Certainly don't want to, so what I'm hearing is we certainly don't want to waste ink. Okay. So here's what we're going to do then. And I, I think I'm seeing consensus. Is that correct? Okay. So what we'll do is, as we did yesterday, we will first vote using our paper ballots, okay? We will then have staff collect those. We will have those read into the record. We will tally, and then we will, assuming, well, we'll see. We'll see if we get a majority, and if so, we will move forward with the resolution. And there was a question on whether or not you should sign it. Yes, please sign the, the ballot. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as I've just put in my vote, I, I wanted to thank all three of the candidates. It is amazing, the gifts all three of you bring to the table here. And as you were talking, I'm like, oh my gosh, she'd be good here. Oh my gosh, she'd be good here. So it, it, you know, not picking one or the other, in my mind, you know, was, it doesn't mean that I can't see either one of you three in some role. I was just texting the mayor about a couple of you as we're sitting here because I think we don't want to miss this opportunity to, to fold you into the city of Lansing where I think you guys would make some great contributions. And so I, I do want to say thank you. I am overwhelmed. I've, I've been overwhelmed by the past two days of, of the candidates. But you three were, were, were just amazing and awesome. So thank you very much.
Yes, Councilman Spatafor.
Well, Sherri, in your tallying, I just wanted to ask, say a few things too. I really appreciated the, the conversation from all three candidate, all eleven, but tonight, the three candidates really did mention a chord that struck on equity, the intersection among the different types of governing units we have here, whether that's a school district, the county, the state, and how those all work together to make lives better for our residents. And also just the core level of service that seems to be at the, at the bottom of each, each of your hearts. You don't show up to these things because they're fun. There's a lot of other ways to spend your Monday and Tuesday nights, I know that. But I really appreciate everyone for stepping up and, and demonstrating that. But particularly, the way that the remarks you, 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 you made this evening really encapsulated and I think reflected not only what's happening in the first ward, but really what's going on in our city at large. And I appreciate that from each, each and every one of you. And thank you for your continued service regardless of how this evening turns out.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. As my colleagues have said, I think this evening, as well as last evening, was an experience for council themselves in hearing new ideas, hearing new ways to look at things. Sometimes when you've sat in this position for a long time, you're not always listening as well as, as intently as you should. And so having the information that was brought to us and in a, a way that captivated us as we sat here, I saw a number of heads nodding up and down when different comments were made. Whoever is selected will be a benefit to this council and to the city. Those that might not be elected, there is definitely opportunities for you to serve our community in other ways. And we all know that this position is moving into an election. And so there's that opportunity for you to be out there at doors doing some of the same thing that you did here in this chamber, and that's communicating with the public. So I want to thank you for that. And thank you for helping us become better council members because of your interview process.
Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I just really want to say thank you. Thank you guys for all being here, answering our questions, advocating for the city, because I know all of you are doing that on your own. And, you know, you didn't make it easy for, for me at least tonight. I mean, you guys, these are all real solid candidates. A few, a few points stuck out to me more than others on, on one of the candidates. And, and I just encourage you, the, the two that may not make it through this, I hope I see you on the November ballot. I, I encourage you to stay focused in our community and, and keep advocating. So thanks for being here tonight, and best of luck to all of you.
All right. I think, I mean, yeah, I can't say it any better than these folks. The only thing I think I'll add is just how incredibly proud I am to be, you know, a, a part of this community, this Love Lansing team that we have. And to, you know, to, I, I think through the process, and it's not just with these three individuals, but with the folks that we saw before us yesterday as well, I think it just reinforces the type of, the passion and the commitment that folks have for our city and the talent that is out there. And, and I thought you folks spoke very eloquently night, tonight about bringing that talent together, leveraging that talent to really make sure that, you know, we, we help people ascend, we help people move forward. And, and I would agree with Vice President Wood. I wrote down, I'm not going to lie, I'm a teacher, so we beg, borrow, and steal. I took a whole lot of your ideas down. It would like to work with you all in terms of bringing some of those things to fruition. The only other thing I would say is that I do encourage everybody that was involved in this process to consider running for this position. As somebody that has, has now run in two elections, and one I ran, I ran unopposed. And I thought that was horrifically bad for my ward, if I'm being frank. Easy for me, good for me, bad for my ward. You guys have an incredible opportunity in the first ward to not only, and you've had this opportunity the last couple of days, to discuss the issues that are important in the first ward, but now you have the opportunity, two years in a row, to make sure that your issues are front burner issues. Your issues are in the headlines. The reporters are, you know, covering your issues. You're using some of that, some of that coverage and some of that energy to bring people together and to advocate and to problem solve. And, and the first ward is, is certainly going to be in the spotlight the next couple of years. And so if I was a citizen of the first ward, or somebody that was looking to run for this position in the first ward, I would be incredibly excited in terms of what's to come. So again, I encourage everybody that's been a part of this process and others to seriously consider running for that position. That being said, we do have our votes tallied. And so what we're going to have at this point is Clerk Volk actually read those into the record.
Councilmember Hussein, Benjamin Dowd. Councilmember Brown, Brian Daniels. Council, Councilmember Spatafor, Brian Daniels. Councilmember Jackson, Kaitlyn Kavanaugh. Councilmember Spitzley, Brian Daniels. Councilmember Wood, Brian Daniels. And Councilmember Garza, Brian Daniels. That's five votes for Brian Daniels, one for Kaitlyn Kavanaugh, and one for Benjamin Dowd.
Mr. Vice President.
I was just going to move a resolution appointing Brian Daniels to the first ward position.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Brian Daniels to the vacancy of first ward council member. Is there further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor? Actually, let's take a roll call. Let's do that.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I, I'd like to start again because my mic wasn't on. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Daniels, congratulations.
So what we are going to do, we actually have, before we adjourn, we have a special meeting that has been called for eight o'clock. We're still going to give folks five minutes. The only agenda item obviously tonight is the appointment of Mr. Brian Daniels to the vacancy of first ward. And then what we'll actually do is we'll get him sworn in, and then we'll get folks home before the snow hits. Okay? So we're going to go ahead and stand, I'm sorry, we're going to go and stand adjourned at 7:56.